Okay, here we go. Rick's trying to get in, let me.
I am getting a lot of messages that we are in fact live on Facebook. So for those of you watching live on Facebook, thank you so much for being patient with us as we're having a few technical difficulties and we're going to get started in just one minute.
We are now live on the website.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, Rick, are you there?
There he is. Hi, Rick.
Hi, Rick.
Okay, I guess we can get ready. So I'm going to mute myself. So whenever you get ready.
All right, Mayor Cannel, let's go ahead and get us going.
Very good. So for those of you tuning in on Facebook or website, sorry for the little delay there, just trying to get everybody lined up. But welcome to our Zoom meeting here. And we'll call this meeting to order with Madam Clark taking the roll call.
All right, Mr. Braun.
Present.
Mr. Moore is absent this evening. Ms. Pace Snook.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Ms. Seabacher.
Present.
Mr. Schiverdecker.
Going to be here.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
And Mr. Stone.
Present.
Seven council members present and one absent.
Okay, so again, this meeting, we're set in history. This is our first Zoom city council meeting. We've already experienced some technical difficulties, but we're going to get this done. The first item on our agenda for new business is the Country Club fireworks display discussion. The Country Club requested that the city try to cover the entire tab for the Fourth of July fireworks for financial reasons. The club, they just, they can't afford because of their their lowered population there that they can't afford to cover their, their share, what they would call their share in fireworks. So they're asking us to do talk about covering the entire bill. I believe the number was 5,900. The pyrotechnician needs to have an answer pretty quickly on this. So I will open it up to the floor.
So no matter what happens, if we, if we move forward with this and we cannot fulfill our obligations, no matter what, with the social distancing piece of it, how does that affect pyrotechnics?
So there's no loss on that. If that were to be the case, and we would have to cancel it, there'd be no cost. They would let us opt out of the contract or potentially delay until the fall when we could do the fireworks. So either way, we would be okay in that scenario. So we would not lose $5,900.
And do you think that it's, it's, we know we have some things coming up, and I'm not opposed to fireworks. I will tell you that now, but it's things that have been asked of me from, from others. Do you think it's a smart decision to tell the Country Club, yes, we will fund them and then not do something maybe a little differently as far as location? Again, I am not against the fireworks. I just want to tell you what other people have said to me.
Yeah, they're, they're completely okay with still having the fireworks there on their property if, if we choose to do that. And that could be a discussion that we could have, you know, going forward, we would probably need to let the guy know pretty soon where we would want to have it other than that. But, you know, the club's fine to have, still have it there. They've been gracious for so many years to, to sort of host this and pay for, you know, a good portion of it. And, and for one thing, I just want to thank them for all the years that they have done this.
Do we usually pay half? Is that what we usually pay?
We used to, Mary, and then I think last year, they requested to, for us to kick in a little bit more than half. So.
Yes, I remember.
Kind of just headed that direction.
Okay.
We're not able.
Thirty-five, $3,500 sticks in my head. That may not be the right.
I remember.
I know, I know a number of years ago, and I did this research a couple of years ago for the city council. The city council actually didn't pay anything and they, they came and asked the city council for half. And they got people from, from, from businesses around town. It wasn't necessarily the Country Club paying, but the Country Club went and found donations from various community organizations and/or businesses. And then last year, they came and asked for, I believe it was like three quarters. And
Yes.
Just, I'm just kind of halfway thinking if, if we do go ahead and agree to the full amount, it's going to be the Fulton fireworks display from here on it.
Is there not an option to try to get those donations from the community again? Is that just something that's off the table? I just, I'm struggling with, with us funding it completely if there are other avenues that we can explore.
I feel like right now, asking for money from small businesses might not be a great idea because of COVID-19. And we've got a lot of businesses that are closing down, that are struggling. They're not going to have the opportunity this year at least.
Sure. And maybe, and maybe not small businesses necessarily, but maybe some of the larger corporations, Ovid Bell, Dollar General, you know, Rogers, things like that. I mean, it's just, I'm struggling with how it might be, it might come across if we are not putting money in one area, but we're putting money here. I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing with our taxpayer dollars. And I, and I know a lot of people enjoy it. But I just, again, I just want to make sure that we're exploring every avenue that we have available.
And Valerie, I can tell you, I did reach out to a couple of businesses that have been doing, you know, pretty well through this. And I have not gotten answers, one way or the other, as to whether they can help us or not, or what they want to. So that that may be an option. I think we could probably say we'll fund it and still look for some, some help out there. That's just my thoughts.
I think it's an important thing to the community. And I know that we need to give a decision to the pyrotechnics soon, which doesn't give us a whole lot of time to ask around for other opportunities, other businesses and things like that to chip in. So I personally think that this year, we can look at funding it and then reaching out to everybody in the community and saying, hey, we need some assistance with this because we can't just foot the bill.
Is this pyrotechnic company our only option? Do we have a way that we could shop this around a little bit and maybe give us the option of a little more time?
I think if we.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I think if we had known sooner, maybe. But this is kind of being thrown at us pretty quickly in this. The, the guy needs an answer basically tomorrow. So he helped out as long as he could. And I'd say that's going to be pretty similar to the other one. But I think before next year, we definitely could, could look at, you know, different options and stuff. But, but this guy's been doing it for a long time. He's a local guy. And he has vested interest in this community. So I think that's worth something as well. And just to note also, the street fair fireworks will not be going on this year. They decided not to do that. So this would be the only really kind of big play. I don't, here, we probably all need to get out and celebrate as much as we can, when we can, and.
That's, the comment I was going to make is that there would not, even if the street fair changes dates, they probably will not have a fireworks display. They definitely won't have one in June.
Right.
And I think, you know, I think we should do this for this year. I mean, we can, we can always hand this off to the Brick District or another organization in town for next year and let them spearhead these efforts. But I think come Fourth of July this year, you know, between if we, if the next item on the agenda is able to happen and this one, I think we're going to need it.
Other thing I was going to say a moment ago is that they have used the same company for a very, very long time. But one kind of interesting piece is, I'm assuming Mayor Cannel, this contract would still be handled by the Country Club and we would just be donating the funds rather than us signing a contract with the entity directly.
So we wouldn't be liable?
Well, my question is, if, if we're simply donating the funds like we always have, wouldn't need a resolution to sign a contract with them. Whereas if we're actually taking on the contract with the company ourselves, we would, we would need to get a resolution in order to do that. The Country Club's willing to still be a pass through, will.
That's a really, that's a really good point, Courtney. And I, I'm very confident that the Country Club would have no problem with that.
Okay.
Remember, people use, you know, even if we keep the Country Club as the primary location, St. Peter's School offers up their property. We have Veterans Park right there our citizens use.
Sure.
It's, it's not just something that, oh, we're donating to the Country Club and they're going to receive all the benefit.
No.
On the property. It's.
The city, yes.
Yep. Well, I.
I don't totally want to be the money guy, but that's kind of what I do. COVID-19 is going to be very brutal on the city of Fulton as well.
Yep.
We have not forced people to pay utility bills for the past month. Not probably going on for another 30 days. And that's been, I mean, people, the bill is still accumulating and people are going to owe it. But we haven't done any disconnects or done any penalty billing for the past couple of months. You know, we're, so I think we're pretty much out the penalty revenue and the late, the late revenue. And we've also foregone the service fee for online payment for your credit card fees. We were charging, and I got Kathy on here too, just if there was any questions. But I asked her to run some numbers for us today. The penalties, we're, we're coming up on the, going to be the third month there pretty quick. And that's running 15, $18,000 a month that we're losing in the, in the penalties, as well as $3,000 a month in the credit card fees. So just, it's, it's going to have an impact. And in for March, April, it's, we're running about $200,000 behind in collections. And that is, that is owed. That is some money that individuals across the community have decided at this point in time, I'm not going to pay the 50 bill. I'm going to use my funds for other purposes for the house. Okay?
Okay.
COVID-19 is going to hit us hard as well. And, you know, we, a lot of the general fund activities are sales tax driven. Sales tax is very important to the general fund. Many towns right now across the state are working on their budget if they have a July 1st annual budget for January. But some, some of the common numbers that are floating around for cities, they're projecting roughly about a 20% reduction in sales tax collection.
Twenty.
For us, you know, with the, with the capital improvements in the Parks and Rec Stormwater and the street and the general fund, we, we have an estimate of about $4 million a year in sales tax collection. A 20% reduction on that 4 million would be an $800,000 reduction. So it's, the long-term picture is it's, it is going to have an impact. And, and you pull, and all that 800,000 is not in the general fund. Because some of the capital improvements money would not be. But the remainder would be, and, you know, a lot of you guys have been in the council long enough, $800,000 out of the general fund is going to have an impact.
Very good.
Even, even with all that, I moved that we accept the full financial responsibility for the fireworks display on Fourth of July this year.
Second. Very good. I have a motion and a second. Thank you, Bill, for keeping us grounded, grounded there. That's, it's going to be tough.
So where are these funds going to, where are the funds going to come from then?
I assume that they would, out of the council's discretionary fund.
That is, that is my opinion as well.
And again, I can, I can try to do some fundraising on that. I think there's potential there that we could, we could get some assistance on that. So let's not count that out. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll call for the question.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I was a little delayed there. Are we, are we just planning and leaving it where it's at and we're everything the same and just go ahead and fund it? Is that what the, the thought is? Or are we just talking about the funds tonight?
I think we probably have a small window to change the location. I can talk to Dave, David Anderson tomorrow and see if he has a, you know, a timeline where he would have to know for sure. And possibly, we could discuss that maybe at our next meeting, whether it be in person, Zoom again, or whatever. But.
That would change your contracting requirements, Mr. Mayor.
Pardon?
I'm assuming that would change the contracting requirements. If we change the location, then the Country Club may not be the primary contractor.
That could be true. That potentially could be true, but.
Yeah. I think at this late notice, at this late hour, it probably would behoove us to just kind of leave it like it has been in the past. If we want to do something different, let's talk about it and think about it for next year. That this.
Yeah. I agree.
But it'd be interesting to see what that would look like, maybe out of Tanglewood or, you know, maybe some.
Okay, I think we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Last call. All those in favor.
Give me two.
Yes.
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 Wow, okay. Anyone opposed? Valerie, is that a opposed?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good. So we had six and one, is that right, Courtney?
That's correct.
Very good. That, that motion passed. We'll continue to, I'll let you know any news on that, that, that comes up going forward. Next on our agenda of new business is the request for the annual Fulton Street Fair to be held June 26th, 27th. This is something we've done many times in the past. Sounds like they did meet last night. Was there anything that came out of that that gives you pause or concern, Mr. Johnson?
Um, no. We've done the street fair for, for many years. The department heads have met with the street fair committee, lined. Some of the things that we like and some of the things we don't like. The street fair committee has been very, very willing to work with the city on the provision of the services that we do. Like, like this year, they were, they were thinking they wanted to change the location of some of the electrical outlets. It's fine and dandy as long as it works for us. We don't want to have to build any new boxes. What, and the way that's worked in the past is if it requires the expenditure by the city on any new electrical box or wiring, we charge them for the materials. But then we donate the labor and we can make electricity and donate everything on that day for the, for the event and that type of thing. But like I said, we've been through it many times. The department heads have been through it many times. The department has, are all very interested in, it's a wonderful event for the community. I think this, I think Fulton is very fortunate to have the number of individuals involved in the street fair that donate their time and donate their efforts to allow the citizens to have a couple of days of fun. And the city has worked very hard with them to make sure that it's a successful event. And I will say this, things come up that aren't on the sheet. Every year, there will be phone calls made and answers given. And the goal is to always allow the event to be a very positive experience for everyone interested in and involved. We will do what we need to do to assist in making it a positive event. So as far as them not being here this tonight or having any other questions, I have no qualms in saying that they are a partner in, in working with us in getting this to come to fruition. I, the only thing I'm just a little curious about is, you know, if we're still not, if we're still social distancing and that type of thing, is, is it going to go on at all? That's, you guys probably need to throw that out there. But if it doesn't, you know, that's, that's out of, out of their control as well. And we will know that well enough in advance that we won't be setting up and be doing any of our city activities prior to that. So, I mean, I really have no, no qualms or negative feelings towards having this approved this evening.
Motion to approve.
So I think.
Very good. Thank you for the update, Bill. Is there any questions about this?
How would we, how would we determine whether it doesn't happen, Bill? If, if, if we're still in a social distancing situation, then it would not happen. This happens to be a week before the Fourth of July.
Um, John, I guess my answer to that is, Callaway County seems to be taking most of its lead from the governor's orders. If the governor's order that, on this, these dates in June, June 26th and 27th, that we're supposed to be social distancing, I think at that point, it would be an evaluation as to is getting several thousand people together downtown Fulton in compliance with the order or not in compliance with the order. It is not a decision that one person is going to make. It would be a group decision made by, obviously, the mayor, county health officials on whether the COVID-19 is going to have an impact on whether this event goes on or not.
And outdoor social distancing guidelines are different than indoor. So.
That's true.
Okay. I hope I was able to answer that question for you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
So we have a motion and a second. Are there any other concerns? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no?
All right. Everybody was a yes.
So hopefully, hopefully we'll be in good shape and, and be able to have this event.
Time for some fun, yes.
Yep. So moving on, I had to, I had a appointment for our Fulton Housing Authority. We had a vacancy. I talked to Linda Roots and she is a good candidate. And I would ask for a motion to approve her appointment.
Mr. Mayor, before we go on, I just want to say that I am employed by the Fulton Housing Authority and I'd like to abstain from this vote, please.
Very good. That, that's fine, Valerie. Thank you.
I'm moved to approve Linda Roots' appointment to the Fulton Housing Authority Commission.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or concerns?
Mr. Mayor, the only, it's not a question or a concern, but in the, in the future, when we have something like this, because I don't know Linda Roots from anybody, is there a way that we might be able to get sent to us a little bio about them, who they are? And it doesn't matter whether it's for just this commission or any commission, really. Just a little bit of information about them, so we know a little bit about them.
I don't know that we've ever done that, but I mean, I don't think that's inappropriate. It, I always just call the folks and get, you know, get to know them a little bit. They can get to know me. It's, it's great to, we normally don't have anybody compete for these jobs. We usually get probably one person to do it. So.
I completely understand that. But, you know, that way I could, if, or, you know, a picture, if I saw Linda Roots on the street tomorrow, I wouldn't know who she is.
Right. And I think normally she would have been at our council meeting. So would have got to at least see the, see her. But, but yeah, I, I think we could probably, at least, like you said, give a little bit of a bio.
Thank you.
Very welcome. Any other comments, concerns, discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
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 Opposed, no? Very good. And we thank Linda for volunteering to, to serve on that board. Next up, we have resolutions. Steve Moore can't be with us tonight. So, John, you're on the screen, if you would, sir.
Well. Resolution number 3371, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri to sign all necessary documents in relation to the contract with Missouri Petroleum Products Company LLC of St. Louis, Missouri, for the purpose of providing aggregates seal coat services at an estimated cost of $200,000. I make a motion to move 3371 to second reading or for passage to, at resolution to be passed tonight's meeting. See, I don't have my cheat notes.
It's perfect.
Second.
We got it done.
So did I get a second? Do we have a second? Very good. And obviously, the discussion earlier about our tax revenue being down, Bill, if you would kind of lead us a little bit here in the discussion.
Kyle's with us this evening too. I think we got about $650,000 in the chip seal asset budget this year. Again, due to the unknown situation with COVID-19, we, and the condition of some of the city streets, we probably want to reserve some of that and not, and not award all of that. We're looking at about $200,000 in the chip seal project. As you remember, last year, we got late in the season that we did not do the chip seal program. Contractor never really, I don't think came to central Missouri at all. And the city council was, and the mayor gracious enough over the past couple of years to go out and review these streets and come up with the, the streets that we want to spend the money on. So we're looking at about $200,000 for the chip seal. And then that would leave about $400,000 left in the, of the, of the asphalt overlay program. And Kyle's come up with a list of about $250,000 on that. That we have, we have not bid at this time. And I'm going to kind of turn it over to Kyle a little bit. I think he's recently seen some cost estimates from, I think Cole County opened their bid, Jeff City opened their bid, he's talked to the contractor. And even though, you know, every, you know, everybody's looking at the price of oil as being at some record lows, that number really has not flowed down to the asphalt level yet. I think the, the costs per ton of asphalt are running very close to what they historically have. So Kyle, if you would like to take this for a while.
Yeah, I'll take it. Yeah, Bill, you covered that pretty nicely. Asphalt really hasn't gone down that much right now. I talked to Tom Christiansen. I also talked to the folks and, and Jeff City, who recently bid their asphalt overlay program. Their number, their bid price was about $80 per ton. Ours last year was 8250. So Tom Christiansen said we might be able to get a little bit of savings, but rock's gone up. Yeah, oil's gone down a little bit, but rock has gone up. So. Yeah, oil's gone down a little bit, but um rock has gone up, so. Um and, and depending on what quantity we bid to may, may uh change the price. But um, you know, looking at our asphalt list, uh I would really encourage us, you know, we've, we've got a project on Jefferson Street. We've had uh water and gas kind of tear through the Cleewood subdivision.
Yes.
Um so I would like to um, I would like to keep those elements. And you know, that would, that, that does equal, as Bill mentioned, something around two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh we were planning on doing um Wood Street and a couple other, a couple other streets that were on the list, uh but um, you know, I feel that if we don't do Cleewood and we don't, you know, do Jefferson Street, uh you know, somebody might drag me through the streets. So, you know, so um that's, that's what I'm hoping for, you know, and I think looking, you know, with Bill's numbers, you know, looking at, you know, twenty percent uh city budgets, you know, taxes coming in and everything. Um, you know, if we're at, we were at six hundred and fifty, you know, reducing that down some to match that. Um I, I understand where he's coming from, but um let's see. Anybody have any questions at this point?
I'd just like to say, I think the, the folks on Jefferson have been very patient.
Very.
That's been a, been in torn up for a long time.
Yep. And same, same goes for the, the Cleewood folks. Um you know, they had a pretty substantial watering glass project go through there and and um, you know, they've been good to work with so far.
So kind of what we're looking at this evening, and if, if, and if more discussion is perfectly okay, but like, we are looking for a motion to approve the resolution for the chip seal. And then I don't know if, whether you want to make it like a motion or just discuss it and give us some direction on to proceed with about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of asphalt.
Bill, could we, could we amend the resolution?
Um, no, it's because, because, no, because it'll be two separate vendors.
Okay.
The resolution would be with a specific vendor as, as giving that vendor permission and authorization to do it. And we don't have the numbers yet on the asphalt. Alls we have is estimates that would cost us based on what vendors have provided to other communities and entities.
So, but we're, we're asking even for the chip seal instead of two hundred, we're asking for two hundred and thirty thousand. So should we amend that to two hundred and thirty thousand instead of the two hundred?
Yeah, that, that'd be fine.
Hey Courtney, I'd like to amend resolution thirty-three seventy-one to read two hundred and thirty thousand dollars instead of two hundred thousand dollars, please.
Thank you.
Second.
Yeah, it's a good point.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ballard.
Sorry. Um, the way I look at the list that you sent us, the Jefferson Street Cleewood stuff is the asphalt overlay, which is not in, not a chip seal. And all we're approving right now is the chip seal, correct?
Yeah, that is correct. I said it's gonna be a kind of a two-part deal. One is a motion and approval of the resolution for the chip seal.
Okay.
The second is, I don't care, I don't care what you want to do, it is a motion, because you, because it, it will come back to the city council eventually as another resolution for the asphalt. We're looking at the asphalt, Kyle, coming up with a list of, of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the asphalt.
Later.
Later. And it, I mean, he, he doesn't even have it on the street yet, so you're not gonna see it for thirty days at the, at the earliest.
Okay, so we're all, we're only approving the chip seal later this year, hopefully before it gets too cold. We'll approve the uh money to do the asphalt overlay at Cleewood and Jefferson, correct?
Yes, correct. I'm just, on the asphalt, I'm looking for just a, just a verbal of, hey, you can go ahead and, and put this out on the street and get bids and come back to us.
Uh, okay.
Okay.
Hey, you can put that out on the street and get back to us.
Uh, thanks, Jeff.
John, we have a motion to amend resolution um thirty-three seventy-one to be two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I have a motion in a second on that. Um so let's go ahead and start with that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any more discussion on that?
Ready to vote.
Okay, everybody in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Very good. We have the amended version on the table now. Um is there any more discussion on resolution thirty-three seventy-one? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Very good. Resolution thirty-three seventy-one passes. Now, just real quickly, I would entertain a motion to um give Kyle in the street department approval to put the asphalt portion of our budget on the, on the street at the uh estimated cost of two hundred and fifty thousand.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Very good. So we'll look forward to seeing that coming back to us. And moving on, we have resolution number thirty-three seventy-two, if you would, Mr. Schuberbecker.
Yes, sir. Res- resolution number thirty-seven two, resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with the construction company incorporated of Jefferson City, Missouri for the purpose of providing hangar construction services at Fulton Henley Memorial grant documentation from MoDOT, make a motion to adopt resolution thirty-three seventy-two at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion in a second. Um it looks like we got some pretty good competitive bids there on this project. And uh we'll get six new hangers out of it. Um, is there any questions or discussion on that?
Kyle, could you, could you maybe talk about the shortfall a little bit, where those funds would come from, please?
Yes, um so the six-hanger option is about six hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. We've got um grant funding, including our ten percent match, gives us something around uh twenty thousand dollars short uh of that six eighty-eight. Um so we are in pursuit of MoDOT um closing that gap and, and, and helping fund uh the rest of that. Uh so there is, there is potential for us to get uh some more grant funds, some turned-in grant funds uh from other airports. Um our consultant is very optimistic that we may be able to do that. Um so we are, we are gonna pursue that option uh to see if MoDOT will pony up a little bit more. Um we also, uh there, there's also another option. Um the federal government um just, just uh funded our airports uh from, from the Federal Cares Act, uh thirty thousand dollars. Go ahead, Bill.
Kind of like COVID nineteen stimulus.
Right, right, right. So we have uh an additional thirty thousand dollars from the federal government uh coming to our airport to, to help us through um, you know, any operational, any, really anything we want to use it for type money, so we can use it uh, use it for our match. Uh MoDOT asked us what we would use it for, and what I told them is it would be used as, as our match um to take care of any shortfall that, that we have uh because of COVID nineteen, so.
So either way, we have a plan to cover it, whether we use the part of the thirty thousand or we get it from someone else. That's perfect.
Then additionally, John, um you know, I did look at, you know, we, we are looking at hangar rent. Uh you know, you've, you started that discussion last year and uh, you know, right now our tea hangers are at fifteen cents per square foot. You know, these new hangers, um you know, we could, we could look at bumping the, these new hangers um up a few cents because they are brand new. Um you know, that, that may be, be part of our kind of financial package as well, so just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else uh want to hear more about the hangers or talk about that anymore? Hearing none, I'll call.
When would they begin construction, Kyle, do you think?
Um, I, I think it'll be a couple of months yet. Um we still have to get uh concurrence of award and everything through MoDOT and you know, these airport projects, there's just a lot of, there's a lot of red tape involved with them, so I, I'm gonna say a couple of months and if it's before that, I'll be surprised.
Thank you.
Very good. So we have resolution thirty-three seventy-two. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Thirty-three seventy-two will pass. Moving on to ordinances, we have uh bill number fifteen eighty-one and Councilwoman Sebacher, if you would, please.
Yes, sir. Bill number fifteen eighty-one and ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri to approve plat three for Willow Creek subdivision. Um I make a motion that we advance bill number fifteen eighty-one for second reading at our next council meeting.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on this?
When we approved all the, did we approve or did all the plats go to planning and zoning at once when they, when those were done?
John, they sketch plat went to planning and zoning. That encompassed um this plat.
Thank you.
Complus the, the, the whole subdivision as a whole. And then um the final plat, they're kind of coming in pieces, so. Um, did that answer your question?
Yes, very much so. Thank you.
Very good. I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no? So that will wrap things up pretty much. I do want to discuss uh real quickly, we, we have our full city staff expected to be coming back on uh this coming Monday. And maybe, Bill, you could just give us a brief rundown on what that's gonna look like.
We did not go into the stay-at-home all at once. It took us a couple, three weeks to get into the full stay-at-home, which we've been doing now for several weeks. We actually did, so I, I don't see us coming into a full-fledged, this is how we're going to open again, very, real quickly either. Um I see us bringing the staff back, but I see, still see trying to maintain separation of people. I know in the utilities, um Daryl has electric crews working out of two different facilities. He's got water and the sewer departments working out of two different facilities. Some of the crews don't ever come in contact with each other. Um you know, I, I see predicted the police and fire will still keep somewhat of a modified schedule, so to kind of keep um the likelihood of cross, cross-contamination, if that's the right way to say it, amongst employees to a minimum. Um but I do think it will probably keep city hall locked, but we, I do anticipate that we'll, we will reopen the drive-up window. But we'll get, we'll get the staff back and we'll start, start getting out and doing, doing some of those things that um cities do. Kyle has been working very hard to keep his crews separated. Um but you know, with, with the, a lot of times with the half-staff and the half-crew, you know, it's, it's only getting half the work done, and a smaller crew means less gets done even than that, so. Um but it's gonna take us some time. Um, I don't know if we'll, we'll stay on this schedule for a couple of weeks, but before we, before we go and really just open the doors and put everybody back together in one, in one pool um and go back to the way things were last year, uh the city council will be made abreast of it. We'll let you guys know. Uh make, make sure you guys are on board with it. We'll kind of probably wait a little bit and see, see what the governor's orders come out and we'll deevaluate that. The mayor and I have been attending various meetings on a very regular basis on um reopening government, reopening the state, and we will be taking a lot of our, I don't want to say marching orders because that's too firm, because it's still up to us, but we will be taking a lot of our direction and concepts from the group. It will not be a one or two people making a decision. It'll be a group making a decision. And at which time and when we do make the changes, the city council will be part of that group making that decision.
So Bill, I'm gonna ask the question. We have employees that have children at home now. I, you know, with, with schools being closed, if, if someone becomes not feeling well, why we're transitioning back to normal, somewhat whatever normal's going to be, are we going to stick to the current where they can use earned sick leave prior to PTO? How is that gonna work for, for the employees?
Um it's, well, you asked a couple of different questions there. If you have kids at home, there's actually a, a new pandemic family medical leave act. And we will implement that and the, the, the kids, if, if you have small children at home, you are entitled to additional um family medical leave, but it's classified as pandemic leave, okay? We will, we will work with those individuals pursuant to the law. Um the way we've been working the other, the other side of it as far as just being off, um are what we said several weeks ago, we will let you use extended sick ta- sick leave. Right now, the policy is you have, for the general employee, you have to use four shifts of PTO before you get into your extended sick. And what we said several weeks ago is, we would let you go straight to extended sick and/or back credit to extended sick if you tested positive for the coronavirus. Now, if you just don't feel good, we, we, that would still be under the PTO prior to getting into the sick leave. But if you, if you test positive, we don't want any, any employee to feel jeopardized of getting tested um for, for that, for that fear, when we would let them use sick time from the first day.
Okay. So are we encouraging, are we, are we forcing or encouraging people to come to work that may not be feeling well once we get back into this a little bit? And I understand there's always gonna be somebody that tries to abuse the system. But is it benefit to us as the city to, to do it that way?
We have also, I, I signed off on a paper probably two or three weeks ago that any coronavirus-related tests are covered one hundred percent by the city. You, you don't have any deductible, you don't have any out-of-pocket. If, if your doctor says, go get a coronavirus test, we are covering the test.
Test, very prevalent and quick, less than twenty-four hours at almost every testing facility in the region. Testing is very quick for this now. Bill, I do think we need to come up with a plan very quickly to find a way to open city hall.
To do what, sir?
To open city hall. And whether that be at a decreased capacity, uh taped lines on the floor, as you see in many other businesses. I think it's an extremely positive visual for us that if we are going to support everything that's occurring in the state and support this in the city, that we need to show that we're, we can follow all the rules too. Uh sending a message to, to open the city and allow businesses to open, but to keep our doors locked. is not send a constructive message. And I recognize we'll do this slowly. We closed it slowly and we'll open it back up slowly. But I think one of the first items on the plan needs to be to open city hall.
We will try to come up with something. If we, if we do what we're doing on May fourth, two weeks from that would be the 18th. Maybe, maybe shoot for the 18th of opening city hall.
Or, or even sooner, if you can come up with a plan sooner.
We can.
And again, that could be 10% capacity. It could be by appointments, you know, whatever we want to do, but I think we need to unlock the doors.
Um, I don't know if any of you have been in city hall, like, I guess you haven't. We did have, I don't know if you've been around town and seen the plexiglass screens in between, between you and some of the registers. We had the building and grounds staff, um, put together some of those screens for the various, for the various windows.
And perfect. And that's what we're using in the hospitals. So it's, it's not uncommon.
Well, those, those are, those are already constructed and installed.
And then that allows for opening the building even faster.
Well, maybe we'll shoot for the, for the 11th.
That'd be wonderful.
My, my fear is not what's happening in Callaway County because we have done, we have been fortunate and done a, a wonderful job of keeping it to a minimum. My fear is when it starts opening up and people go to the lake and come back to Fulton, or they go to St. Louis and come back to Fulton.
Yes.
That is where the fear is from my perspective. I, and I am, I understand the economy as much as anybody because I have been affected drastically, but I also think human life is worth much, much more.
I agree. Move very slow with this, please.
So, um, I hate to put you on the spot again, Bill, but I've been questioned by several people. Are we going to, uh, bring back our spring, uh, junk pickup or whatever?
My question also, yes, I had another.
Bulk trash pickup? I'm guessing for spring, we probably won't. And maybe we'll just try and do the fall one a little bit early and maybe do it in towards the end of July or in August instead of waiting till October. Just do one, one this year.
That would help. Also, I have a question concerning that. Are we going to be bringing back our recycle? How soon? We're looking at that, Bill.
That's going to be, if, if we bring back the, if we back to opening city hall and some of those activities, probably at that time. Or, or it's another discussion with the city council as to whether you want to maintain the curbside recycling program or not.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I know I would have gotten a lot of questions as to what is the city doing? So whatever we decide, we need to think about our communication to the general public. Because whatever we were doing didn't work too well. So just as a, oh, by the way.
Darren's been posting to the COVID-19 page just about every day, I believe, so.
And Ms. Helen's here today. She can help us.
Well, folks, that was interesting. I appreciate everybody's patience. Thank you, Darren. Thank you, Courtney, for working to get us all connected. And, uh, we came out of the gate a little bit slow, but I think things went very well tonight. And, um, hopefully maybe by our next meeting, we'll have city hall back open. We can all get back together um, in the, the normal way. Um, if not, we'll do it this way again. So.
I'd like to, I'd like to thank Courtney and Darren for pulling this, uh, web meeting together.
Definitely. Thank you.
The reason is because I had nothing to do with it. Mission to adjourn.
Great job.
Second. Okay.
There you go.